Okay, we now call the county court meeting to order. First, we have Tyler.
Quiet ahead please. And we follow with thank you for another day, essentially for our state, for our county, for this county government, Lord. We just ask for blessings upon these people that are here. We ask a blessing for Mr. Chadwell's son. I think he had surgery today. We just ask if your will can be done there, Lord. Just ask now as we conduct this meeting, it will be to honor in your glory when we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Would you like to do the pledge, Tyler?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we head over.
Here.
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 Okay. Next, we have Eagle Scout Resolute Ranking Nation. If you don't care, Tyler, would you come on up here? Okay, where is Tyler Keith-Little as a member of the Boy Scouts of America, Great Smoke Mountain County, and has earned the highest rank of Eagle Scout and become the sixty-sixth Eagle Scout of O'Nata Troop Ninety-three in Scott County on the thirtieth day of September twenty-seventeen? And where I ask, Tyler began scouting as a Cub Scout in twenty-oh-seven. Where he earned many belt badges, pins, and all ranks, including the Arrow of Light Award Club, scouting highest award. He crossed over into the Boy Scout Troop in September twenty-eleven, since earning the required twenty-one merit badges and obtaining six ranks to become an Eagle Scout. He has earned a total of thirty-six merit badges. And whereas, filed in Boy Scouts, Tyler held many leadership positions such as quartermaster, patrol leader, and now senior patrol leader. He is a recipient of the World Conservation Award and is a member of the Order of the Arrow, Scouting National Honor Society. And whereas, Tyler is seventeen-year-old son of Brian Little of Helenwood, Stacia Little of Robbins, and the grandson of the late Ken Little and Virgie Little of Cincinnati, Ohio, Marley and April Bowlin of Robbins. Tyler would like to thank all who helped him through the scouting to achieve the Eagle Scout rank. Tyler earned his Eagle Scout award while a member of Scott High School track team and working a part-time job. Tyler enjoys running and airsoft competition. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Scott County Board of County Commissioners and the county mayor, Perdue, hereby recognizes Tyler Keith-Little for his outstanding achievement to become the sixty-sixth Eagle Scout of Boy Scout Troop Ninety-three. And furthermore, the board and county commission, mayor, and all residents of Scott County wish him continued success for the Boy Scout Troop, with the Boy Scout Troop. And further, a copy of the resolution be placed in permanent records at Scott County and a copy be presented to Tyler Keith-Little. Thank you, Tyler Little. Thank you, Tyler. Voting to put that to record? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any approve? Motion carried. Okay, moving on, approval of the minutes from October sixteenth, twenty-seventeen. You're going to end your booklet.
I can move it, put the record.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or changes? Okay, voting on voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, we have nomination of no rebond approvals. All right, Renee B. Kennedy, Buffalo Road. We have Marilyn K. Fang, Kelly Rose Lowen, Tommy Michael Lowen. And next, we have the Surety Bonds, Western Surety Company, Thomas Scott Thompson, Jessica R. Kennedy, and with Personal Surety, Joanne Gibson, Kaylee Lynn Howard, Norma Jean Potter, Olive Bridges, Mary Renee Gaden, and Daniel Lynette Strunk.
I can move it through.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, voting on voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, we have the financial reports. From the county clerk and trustee. They're in your booklet.
I can motion total record.
I'll second that.
Okay, have a first and a second. Is there any other discussion? Voting on voice vote? All those in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Okay, next, we have school matters. Mr. Hall, are you here? Okay, is there anyone from the O'Nata Special Student here? Okay, moving on to the sheriff's report. Is there anyone here from the sheriff's department? Say anything if I can say? No? Okay. Okay, moving on to road matters. Anyone here from the road department? Okay. Moving on to the general public. Is there anyone here from the general public that would like to speak? Okay. Next, we have committee reports and resolutions. First one, that is Parks and Recreation, Kenny Chadwell, and he's not here tonight. Anyone?
Uh, pardon me, Recreation Committee November sixth, two thousand seventeen, members present Kenny Chadwell, Sheila Butler, Diane Sprecher, Chad Markham, Sunny Reagan, and June Jeffers. Also present, Ginger Reynolds, Finance Director, Del Perdue, Mayor, and Ernest Phillips. Called order five weeks by Kenny Chadwell, Chairman. No action was taken, so motion by Sheila Butler, taken by June Jeffers to adjourn the meeting.
Have a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, voting on voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carried. Next, we have emergency services. Chairman Phillips and Sam Lyles.
Uh, the Emergency Service Committee called order at six p.m. by Sam Lyles, acting chairman. All members present except Patty Brown. No action was taken. Motion by Kenny Chadwell, taken by Robin Nunn, Bruin, wearing meetings, voting aye. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, have a first and a second. Any discussion? Voting on voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay. Moving on to buildings and grounds. Rick Russ, Chair.
Building grants meeting, called order six oh six for Rick Russ, Chairman. Members present, Rick Russ, Rick Burke, Sam Lyles, Sheila Butler, Robin Nunn, Robin Nunn, member of that chair before. First, on the agenda, Brom Schumaker from Scott County Airport Authority is checking to see if any of the Scott County Government attendees want a hangar which is going to be removed by the airport authority. Second, Ray Perry, Lead Perry, Chris Ellis Smith, Veronica Henry, and Penitent Resource Center discussing the building which shall be leased from the county. Motion of Rick Burke, second of Sam Lyles, adjourned meeting, voting aye. Motion approved.
Okay, have a first and a second. Are there any discussion on this matter? Okay, voting on voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, moving on to community development. Approval of the twenty-eighteen holiday schedule on there.
Community government, November sixth, members present, Robin Nunn, Trent Cross, June Jeffers, Sheila Butler, Rick Russ, Mary Jackson, Derek Newport, Mike Slaven. Meeting is called order six point five by Robin Nunn, Chairman. Monthly update on the little program by Mary Ann Perdue. Number two, motion by Rick Russ, taken by Trent Cross, recommend the two thousand eighteen holiday schedule for Scott County Government, voting aye, all present. Motion by Rick Russ, taken by Sheila Butler, adjourned meeting, voting aye, all present.
Okay, have a first and a second. Is there any discussion on this matter? Okay, voting on voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carried.
I think the schedule is in the included package there and it's also behind it. Looks like a schedule to move some of the dates for the meetings for next year, two thousand eighteen, so I recommend we approve the holiday schedule and reschedule the regular meetings for next year.
Any discussion on this matter? Not changing the dates to work, they feel to say not on the holiday for us to have regular course session. Okay, no discussion? Voting on voice vote to approve the date changes and the holiday schedule? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carried. Okay, moving on in to intergovernmental committee. Chairman Cross, and he's not here.
Intergovernmental Committee, November sixth, members present, Kenny Chadwell, Trent Cross, Blue Day, June Jeffers, and Ernest Phillips, absent with Mike Slaven and Patty Brown. Meeting is called order six thirty-four by Trent Cross, Chairman. Motion by Kenny Chadwell, taken by Blue Day, to recommend the approval of disposal of the county clerk's records, voting aye, all present. Motion by Blue Day, taken by Ernest Phillips, to adjourn the meeting, voting aye, all present.
Motion approved. Okay. Have a first and a second. Is there any discussion on that matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carried.
I think there's two resolutions here, so I'll probably read those. Whereas TCA, section ten, seven, four oh one directs the County West State Body to appoint a county public records commission in order to provide for the disposal of public records and county offices. And whereas, under the law, one of the members must be a member of the County West State Body. And whereas, this position needs to be filled by current members of the County West State Body. And whereas, fourth district commissioner, Kenny Chadwell, recommended by the Scott County Mayor and the Intergovernmental Committee. Now therefore, be it resolved, Scott County Public County Commissioners hereby approve the appointment of fourth district commissioner, Kenny Chadwell, to the Scott County Public Records Commission, replacing former commissioner, David Jeffers. And be it further resolved that other current members of the committee are in remembrance.
Okay, voting on voice vote? To approve this resolution? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carried.
Second resolution says, whereas, the county public records commission is established by state law providing for the order of disposal of records and county offices. And whereas, the Scott County Public Records Commission has been reconstituted by separate resolution of this body on this date. And whereas, Scott County clerk, Pat Phillips, has an immediate need to dispose of certain records in her office before the public records commission can reconvene. And whereas, the listed records requested for disposal by Ms. Phillips is attached to this resolution as in the city. And whereas, all the records listed are due and appropriate for disposal pursuant to state law. Now therefore, be it resolved, Scott County Public County Commissioners hereby approve the immediate disposal of the records as requested by Scott County clerk, Pat Phillips, without separate approval from the Scott County Public Records Commission.
Okay, have a first and a second. Any discussion? Voting on voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carried. Okay, moving on to the budget. Committee, Chairman Cross is also on that one.
The budget committee, November sixth, members present, Trent Cross, Robin Nunn, Rick Russ, Mike Slaven, Patty Brown. Meeting is called order six forty-five by Trent Cross, Chairman. And I wasn't there, so I'm not sure who made it.
I'll have to go back to more than that.
Okay, there's a motion, and second by Rick Russ to approve the budget amendments. Number two, for the general purpose school, one forty-one. Amendment number one, for federal funds, one forty-two. Amendment number two, for federal funds, one forty-two. And also amendment number three, for the federal fund, one forty-two. Voting aye, all present. And Jacob Hewitt, Gracie Kids, and the Stan Junior Coalition inviting the Scott County Commission to the second annual town hall meeting on Monday, November thirteenth, at six p.m. Motion by Rick Russ, taken by Robin Nunn, to adjourn the meeting, voting aye.
Motion third. Second. Okay, have a first and a second. Any discussion?
That includes changing a permit?
So, voting on voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carried. Moving on to fines.
I think we need to approve the budget amendments. I'll make a motion, we approve the budget amendments as presented.
Voting on voice vote? To approve the amendments in your booklet? All those in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Motion carried.
Finance Committee, November thirteenth, members present, Mike Slaven, Bill Hall, Kenny Chadwell, Hugh Sexton, Del Perdue, June Jeffers, members absent, and Ernest Phillips. Also present was Ginger Reynolds, Finance Director, and Hank DeVall from Scott County Airport. And the meeting is called order five oh two by Mike Slaven, Chairman. Motion by Bill Hall, taken by June Jeffers, to recommend the authorization of Scott County Mayor, Del Perdue, to sign the Tennessee Aeronautical Division, is that what they did? Tennessee Aeronautical Division Project number seventy-six dash five 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 dash oh one three four dash eighteen for the...
Reels?
Reels replacement for Scott County Airport Authority. Three thousand two hundred and fifty dollar local match will be allocated from the returns and used, yet had project funds totaling over fifteen thousand dollars. Voting aye, all present. And motion by Kenny Chadwell, taken by June Jeffers, to adjourn the meeting, voting aye,
Okay, have a first and a second. Voting? Okay, voting on voice vote? To approve? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carried.
There was sixty-five thousand dollar grant, I think, project.
The grant that was recommended by the Finance Committee follows minutes, it's a sixty-five thousand dollar grant to the airport authority. Brom, is there anything that you want to address on this? There's a thirty-two, for a thirty-two hundred and fifty dollar match requiring all of?
Right.
Okay, so the grant contract needs to be approved, not a full body?
And its runway extension, lights?
Runway is identified as lights. Lights being the runway, basically.
Sixty-five thousand dollars is not really going to cost us anything, but the local match is three thousand, zero fifty dollars. For sixty-five thousand dollars, on the motion, we approve.
Right. Come on, you're not on the beat. Okay, we have a first and a second. Are there any discussions on this matter? Okay, voting on road call vote?
Brown, Burden, Day, Jeffers, Lyles, Newport, Phillips, Lyles, Strunk.
Okay, there's another grant here.
There is a, there's an attachment for the ambulance grant. It's a CDVG grant for three new ambulances. And I don't know if we addressed this in the work session, if not, we just need to go ahead and approve it.
Yeah, I thought we were going to approve it.
It may have been at a different meeting, but anyway, we also need to approve the CDVG grant for three new ambulances by separate vote and separate road call.
It actually will be two ambulances and two.
Okay. The attachment says for three new ambulances.
Yeah, we had a Congress call with the state last week, and he, Mitch may not have got a change with the state, changed their part of it.
Can you just make sure that we get the revised contract?
I've not, I've not seen it.
I will. So if they're not sending to me, it's not.
It's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar, I don't think, that hasn't changed. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, whole project with a thirty-five thousand dollar match required.
Did we just say thirty-five?
Okay, then we'll provide the branch. But that doesn't need to be approved, once we get the final revised contract.
I don't like the motion.
Have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, voting on road call vote?
Brown, aye. Burden, aye. Day, aye. Jeffers, aye. Lyles, aye. Newport, aye. Phillips, aye. Russ, aye.
Motion carried. Okay, moving on to other matters. I do think we have two or three things on here under other matters.
Just the housing inspections.
Right, that's correct. And they can't do these inspections until these are approved. What it is, it tells you who that they're hiring to do the inspections and who they are to do the lead paint inspections. And a lot of the people in the county, that's like one lady, that they're coming to inspect, she insulates her home out from inside. She turns up a lot of rooms and stuff, but she don't want to do nothing till they come through and, you know, so it's kind of important that we go ahead and try to get this so that they can go ahead and, you know, come and inspect their houses for them. What they done was they sent letters to all different people that does stuff through them, that does home inspections and does paint inspections, and then they send back to the office, and then I send it to them, and then they end up getting the, they do it like the brick tells them, they get the lowest one. But them, us coming in late because they were on the, talking about them, nobody had any inspector, they ended up not having many people left to do them. So there was only like two, and then one on the lead paint, because all the other ones are already working in other counties on this grant. So there wasn't many left for us to pick from.
Do we need to go?
Yes, yes. She can't do anything until these two resolutions are.
Does this, was the payment for this gentleman come from out of grants money?
Yes, already in the grant, yeah. And there's actually two gentlemen, one for the inspection and one for the paint inspection.
Okay, entertain the motion. As long as it is, don't say that's all. So two of them in there?
Yes, uh-huh. One is for the housing inspection, says right on the card, for housing inspection services, and the other one says for lead based paint inspection services.
I'll read the second one if you read the first.
While Scott County has been awarded financial grant assistance and provided under the Home Program for the Tennessee Housing Development Agency, and whereas the County Commission of Scott County finds it in the county's best interest to secure the assistance of an experienced and qualified housing inspection service firm, also known as rehabilitation coordinator to assist in the implementation of the Home Program Grant. Whereas in compliance with Department of State Regulations, the county has solicited and evaluated statements of qualifications of interest professional housing inspection firms. And whereas the County Commission has determined that Crossroads Home Inspection has the most appropriate experience, background, and qualifications to provide said services. And therefore, be it resolved by the County Commissioner of Scott County, the Mayor, Del Perdue, and successors entitled, be authorized and is hereby directed to enter into a contract with Crossroads Home Inspections to provide professional housing inspection services as required to implement fiscal year two thousand sixteen Home Program Grant.
Okay, have a first and a second. I'm interested.
You want to read both of them combined?
We're going to read both, combine both, subtext.
We're going to read both, combine the votes with subtitles.
Okay. Have a first and a second, my vote. Say this. Okay, any discussion? Voting on voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
I brought a question for you.
Okay, okay.
This house inspection is just already inspecting for lead paint, is it possible?
The second one is on, the first one is just for inspecting, they have eight people picked, but they don't know whether they, they.
Is this, is this pertaining to the same thing that when the state fire marshals office came in here?
Yes, but they.
And we voted that down?
Uh, just the fire marshals know everything they're doing, this is.
We done regular, colleagues qualified for the grant, yes.
And that the, the legislature passed that they didn't have to have, if they didn't pass the code. Yeah, they don't pass it, so that.
The inspectors will come through then, right?
Yes.
We've, we've got a couple that's coming in saying they would like to do these jobs, and this grant does pay for everything that's coming down.
And what it is, that you have eight people, and then they will go, and, and the grant only pays for certain things. So they'll go out and they'll say, we can't fix this because it's not whatever. That's what the first inspection is. The first inspection is to see what they have, what they said they needed, if they can help with the grant. And then if they do say, yes, they can help, then they have to check the lead paint, and if they have lead paint, they're going to strip all their paint, everything, repaint.
This doesn't anything with the license contract?
No, no, they, no.
Mary, and what's a Crossroads Home Inspection, where they from?
Uh, that's just some of the people that's with that company only that does the inspections. They have to be, they have to go through the state and be, you know, saying that they can do this and stuff. That's just some of the ones they have, the people that's doing this for us. It's not Mitch, it's the other guy that does the, the grants. The home development, uh, you know.
Any more discussion, any more questions?
But they have a list, June, that they have that does this, and then they have a list that does the paint. But since we've waited so long, you know, we had to do the codes, it's been a long time since we got this grant. A lot of the people on the list are already working in other counties on these home grants. So they didn't have many left to. They only had two left on this that wasn't working, and then one.
It's been a year ago, had it?
It's been a little over a year.
About a year since.
Yeah, a little over a year, yeah.
My guy had it done in three years, so that's reason she went ahead and brought it to court tonight.
Yeah, and some of the people need to get their houses insulated because it's so cold.
They need to start working to get that.
Any more questions? Okay, voting on voice vote to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Segment resolution is for lead based paint inspection services. Where Scott County has been awarded financial grant assistance as provided under the Home Program from the Tennessee Housing Development Agency, and where the mayor and County Commission of Scott County finds it in the county's best interest to secure the assistance of an experienced and qualified lead based paint inspection service firm to assist in the implementation of the Home Program Grant. And whereas in compliance with Department of State regulations, the county has solicited and evaluated statements of qualifications of interest to professional lead based inspection firms, and whereas the County Commission has determined that Todd Kennedy has the most appropriate experience, background, and qualifications to provide said services. Now therefore be resolved by the mayor and County Commission of Scott County, that Mayor Dale Perdue and successors in town, be authorized and is hereby directed to enter into a contract with Todd Kennedy to provide the lead based inspection services as required to implement fiscal year 2016 Home Program Grant.
Make a motion to sit through the motion.
Second.
Okay. Have a first and a second, is there any discussion on this? Okay, voting on voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, moving on with other, more other matters.
I wanted to, I wanted to address something that came, uh, that the mayor's office subsequent to the, uh, the work session, and that is, that was a contact, or a contact that, uh, T-DOT, their environmental division office, uh, I'm sure all of you have heard about, proposed, uh, change, uh, in Onada to redirect Highway twenty-seven located at the beginning at the Pine Creek, uh, Creek, uh, or the bridge, and cutting out that curve. Uh, that currently is the proposal from T-DOT. We're not sure exactly when that can start, but they did contact the mayor's office, uh, on November the ninth. What they're asking for is, once that, once that process starts, there may or may not be an alteration of that section of Pine Creek across the bridge. When something like that happens under the federal and state laws, any kind of redirection or any kind of change in that waterway will require what they call a mediation, an environmental mediation. And what that, what that requires is some part of a wetland to be mediated, uh, by the state government. Now, what they're asking this body to do is they have plenty there, identified an area of Pine Creek in a different section of the county, it's actually adjacent to the airport, that they think is suitable for mediation. Now, they haven't made that determination because they haven't been on site yet, but they're asking the county to, uh, in the event that that is appropriate for mediation, to go ahead and sign an easement over to the state to allow them to do that. Now, that does not convey a property, it just allows the state to improve that, that property. Uh, it will, it will not involve any money from this body, at least from what I can see. In order to proceed from this point, in order to not delay the process any further, I would like to get the body's approval to go ahead and execute the easement document and any other documents, so long as it does not involve any kind of expenditure of county funds, of course. Uh, if the state identifies this as a proper mediation site, but I'd like for the body to approve that upon the agreement of myself, county mayor, and the chair of the Building and Grounds Committee, Mr. Ross. Now, it may be that this is so far in the future that we don't need to address it, but in the event, I've called this guy today, I have not got a message back, his name is Paul Burnell, he's with the Environmental Division. I'm not sure how urgent this is, but in the event that it is urgent, I don't want to delay this process any further. So that's why I'm asking for, uh, a conditional approval to execute the easement, as long as the three of us are okay.
Is this the easement out of the airport?
There is part of Pine Creek that actually extends a distance to the airport property. Now, it raises some questions in my mind because, I had a, I had a list of questions for this, this gentleman. Because anytime you propose to do anything close to the airport, you have to address potential FAA and Aeronautics Division's issues. So that's what I wanted to discuss with him. It may be that it's not an issue. If it is an issue, it might not be appropriate for mediation area for, uh, but I, if everything did fall into place, and we were satisfied that this was an appropriate area for that, I just wanted to make sure that we have the authority to go ahead and approve the documents. And like I say, if anything, if anything comes up that's unexpected, we will not execute. I mean, including the expenditure of any kind of funds, which I do not see in these documents, but if anything comes up that raises a question, we'll bring those issues back to this body. So all I'm asking for is the authority to execute the easement agreement, any other documents with T-DOT, uh, pursuant to any kind of mitigation environmental.
Was this an easement agreement from up in Onada, hallway back out to the airport?
Actually, no, it's actually, what?
If they destroy a part of the wetland.
They can, if they destroy, yeah, exactly, they have to improve another area. It actually happened at the Burksfield School. There was a wetland issue there that had to be addressed by the improvement of a wetland in another area. This is the same kind of issue, it's, it's a, it's a weird issue. But in order for any kind, in, in order for the state or federal government to alter or change a natural waterway, you have to identify another area that could be improved, and for some reason, that, that complies with the state and federal laws. So the, the state has identified this as a potential area for mediation.
It is a way then, oh, you just got to count from, from out the airport area, but the airport does exist there, but.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, like I say, I'm not sure if it's going to be the right area, but we just don't want to delay it in the event that it's okay.
I'll say.
Have a first and a second, is there any discussion, any more discussion on this matter? Okay, voting on voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Is there any other matters, things that come before the court?
Yeah, we've got, yeah, basically. The enhanced Medicare reimbursement project has, uh, pretty much come to fruition now. I think y'all heard Senator Rager talk about it when he was here the last time. We got some paperwork on it, uh, this week, not had a lot of time, well, end of last week. We've not had a lot of time, but didn't want to, uh, give you all a little bit of idea about it, and if there's no objection, uh, there's a direction that we need to go with, and we don't have a lot of, I don't really have time to wait for the next meeting to do that. What is happening is the federal government, the state government has recognized that the state of Tennessee basically was underpaid twenty-three million dollars a year for an average ambulance building. And they have, uh, made a, a, uh, attempt to correct that, with federal money being somewhere around nineteen thou, or nineteen million, and the state money approximately ten million. What that equates to for us is not thirty million. What it equates to for us is on our Medicaid transport, we will get a hundred and forty dollar bonus for each one of those transports. That, uh, in a year's time, if that held true, that could be somewhere in the hundred and twenty to hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, that it would increase funding for us. The thing that I'd like for y'all to know is this funding is not particularly to help us with our budget. This is to upgrade EMS. That is the application that was put to the feds, that's the way it was applied, that we need to upgrade our system because we've been underpaid, we've not been able to keep up, and that's the reasoning for it. Uh, with that said, uh, we don't want this going through the building process we've had. I talked to Ms. Ginger about it, I talked to John a little bit, uh, talked to Jimmy Bird with Satan, uh, what, there's no, uh, objection from this court, uh, with, with John and Ginger, myself, and Jimmy. Uh, I would like to be able to contact the state and get this funding put into an account that would be just for that. It will not be part of our budget, it will not be considered part of what we may make next year, uh, because this is a one way thing, it doesn't mean that, uh, we will get it next year at all, but we, we're going to back up to January is when it's approved, and we're going to start collecting on that now. So what we would like to see is it to go into a, an account, I think Ginger, your idea was to set a line item just for that.
It'll be restricted funds.
Restricted funds. And that will be just for upgraded equipment, uh, the things that we can't normally buy in our budget, uh, if we need a heart monitor, we don't have in our budget to spend twenty-five thousand dollars on that. But with this money, we may be able to at some point. To, uh, in a couple of years, if we had enough of it and it continued to come, instead of maybe having the budget of the ambulance in our normal budget, we could actually pick an ambulance out and buy certain, that's the kind of things that it's got to be used for. Uh, there's some equipment that we've not been able to buy, it's new stuff, we would love to have had, but, uh, it's been hard times for the last few years, and we've done, the best we can do is what we had and deal with, and this is a real opportunity for us maybe to start upgrading some stuff and provide a, a better service than what we are now. And I, I think we do a really good job now, but, uh, unlike Dick Sexton, I guess we worked really hard and we're as good as they are, huh? And I, and I feel that way, but new equipment, new things are coming on every day, and this is going to be a God sent to us to be able to help us. So what I'd like to be able to do is get this into a separate account, barring any objection, I mean, it's not going to be something I can just spend it wheel with no means. If it's something that has to be, it'll always come before you all, like always. Anything that we are going to buy that's above, beyond the ten thousand dollar range, it'll always come here. So we're not bypassing anybody, we just don't need it going through our billing department, and we don't need it mixed into our budget. It's not to pay electric with, it's not to pay water wheels with, it's not to keep the daily supplies with, that's not why they're giving it to us. It's to upgrade and make ourselves better, and that's what. Like I say, I can, just a little bit of an idea, but it's a hundred and forty dollars, uh, per patient that we transport, and in the first quarter, we done about four hundred, four hundred and fifty patients. So that was a really good quarter. I don't know if all the rest of the match, I've not sat down and done all the numbers yet, but, uh, I, I think we'll, uh, it's going to be a big help regardless of what it is. That's, that's really all I have, I just wanted to know about it, and it's something that's been worked on for a long time. Uh, Region Two is the ones that started this thing seven, eight years ago, uh, it's been carried. Uh, TACF, Tennessee Ambulance Service Association, has worked extremely hard, uh, they logged Washington, they worked hard, uh, with the state, and they got this through, and the state's happy with it because it doesn't cost them money, and, uh, the feds is picking up on this part of it.
So that first part you said there, four hundred and fifty patients, there's sixty-three thousand dollars there?
Yeah, somewhere if you did four hundred and fifty-six thousand. But now, be advised, we got to pay nine dollars and some cents back per patient, which is four thousand dollars off, just off the top of my head, about four thousand dollars we have to pay back. That's a pretty good trade out, if you can do fifty thousand for three thousand. I trade like that all day long. It's just we have to pay an assessment fee to the state, which actually pays the state as part of this increase.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank y'all.
Okay, need a motion and a second?
Motion.
Done, got it?
Second.
Second, okay. I'm going to sleep. Okay, any more discussion? Voting on roll call vote?
Brown, aye. Burr, aye. Batsen, aye.
by several commissioners tonight about a road that has just been blocked off the Veneal Cemetery down at present time. If that's the case, my understanding is that is a county road, I know it's a public cemetery down at the, so I would like that, if that's the case, I'd like whoever blocked this off to be contacted, help remove the gate immediately.
I have called that the house.
You got calls on the table? But if that's the case, if I ask either road superintendent, law enforcement, whoever gets brought down that, we've done with this, we've had issues and we're just going to keep going, so if we deal with it now, don't question anybody else who wants to close the road, I'm good for going ahead and deal with it, so. I would like to ask you, mayor, if that's the case, if I should make one, contact that person, if it's, if it is a public county road, get the gate down immediately, we'll address it back in the next minute.
I'll be over this. Thank you. Motion, Jerry. Second. Second. Mr. Bailey?
Our hip, we probably just thank you this day for allowing us to come together to, to address the issues of this county. We thank you for all the blessings of life that you've bestowed upon us. We've been given so much, we take so much for granted. Please forgive us for we failed you and, Lord, we just give thanks, especially at this time of year, for all our blessings and be with us and guide us throughout this week and beyond and let us do what is pleasing to you in everything that we do in Jesus' name and pray. Amen.